Okay. I think there's just the two of us as far as for. So we can go forward with a roll call, please. I'm sorry, I'm talking like I've already said, good evening. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the town meeting for the town of Upper Marlboro. It's it is September fourteenth, twenty twenty one. And it is seven oh two. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, President Penoyer.
President.
Commissioner Franklin.
I'm here.
Commissioner Duckett.
She has.
Very well. Town Administrator Carl Snyder.
Present.
Police Chief. First.
Present.
William Morgan.
Present.
Darnell Bond, Public Works.
Present.
John Hudson, Town Clerk, present.
Stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do I have a consent to the agenda?
I consent to the agenda.
Okay, and approval of the minute, minute, meeting minutes and financial reports, which include the August tenth, twenty twenty one, regular town minutes, the August twenty fourth, twenty twenty one boardwork session minutes, finance report and approval of the treasurer's report as of August thirty first, twenty twenty one. I move that we approve these minutes. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay.
We still need.
I'm sorry.
We still have to vote when there's just two of us and we.
We don't really. All by ourselves. Okay, what we will do is move on to department reports. First up is public safety. Chief first, if you would.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry for the little delay. For the month of August, we had one traffic complaint. We had four domestic calls. We had one residential alarm, one vehicle accident, two theft report calls, six suspicious autos, eight commercial. We had one check on the welfare, one death report, one loud music, one miscellaneous report, one vandalism call, one fraud hit and run report each, two lost properties, three disorderly calls, one trespassing call and five suspicious persons call, which was probably two people, but one household call three times. And for the month, basically, same thing from the beginning, conference calls with the PG Chiefs Association, Office of Emergency Management, Maryland State Police. Hopefully, this will be the last time, reference to COVID. Attended a conference call with the Maryland Chiefs Association. We had a small protest at the Prince George's County Courthouse last month that myself, Sergeant Irby and Code Officer Vicki monitored. Participated in this monthly cert meeting. And Sergeant Irby completed his in-service and firearms training, which is required each year. So he is certified for this time until next year. Also had a opportunity to participate in a virtual meeting with the officer, the county executive in demonstrating how the municipal partnership with the Prince George's County Police and Fire Department has been going forward, if there were any challenges or changes that we needed to make. Myself and Town Administrator Snyder reviewed several proposals for the speed and red light camera that we hope to roll out by the end of the year. Myself and the mayor participated in the installation of the new leader for the International Moose Lodge. Hopefully, that's the right title. But we went and participated with that. Myself, Sergeant Irby and Code Officer, again, we participated in the cruising on Main Street Car Show, which was a success. And also the city of Bowie actually requested that I come out and assist them with a property audit that they have to meet for their standards that is mandated by their department. So I assisted them with that particular audit and they were successful in finishing that up. And for the month, we had sixty nine moving violations and a hundred and one parking citations, issued eleven code letters for the month of August. So if anybody has any questions, if not, that is it for me.
Have any questions for chief at this point? Hearing. I'm sorry.
I was just saying no, sorry.
Okay, hearing none, we will. Thank you, chief, and we will move on to Mr. Bond with Public Works.
All right. Good evening, everyone. For the month of August, this is our report for things that we were getting into. For things public works related, orders for the new dump body truck and trailer were put into Chesapeake Ford and TWP Motorsports. The new Public Works crew member, Matthew Sheckles, was onboarded and began his training in Public Works Operations and Equipment. Public Works vehicles were inspected by the County Health and Department of Environment inspectors for their annual update. Myself and excuse me, myself and Town Administrator Snyder met with representatives of Dennison Landscaping and Landscape Design to get ideas and quotes for the Cal Memorial Beautification. I also held, held individual meetings with our new crew leads to ensure their new roles were new roles and expected duties were understood. We also were signed up for a National Traffic Incident Management Training Course that took place earlier this month. We had one person go to the early training and myself and the new crew member Sheckles will be attending on the twenty second. So you'll see that again next month. For maintenance of beautification, maintenance of the public works generator and weed eaters performed a house tractor was sent to Cabo for once over and some minor issues. Trucks two fifteen and two sixteen sent in for routine maintenance. Pet waste station supplies were ordered and now received and all of them should be now in working order. For street and sidewalks, I met with the County Inspector Watson to show and inspect all sinkholes within the county's right of way. We had one fallen tree on Old Crane Highway, which resulted in traffic control and a partial shutdown for about twenty minutes or so. And I submitted a list of service requests for issues in the M dot right of way to Town Administrator Snyder. Public Works also completed the setup and take down of road closures for cruising on Main. For weather-related activities, we acquired sandbags to divert stormwater around the Public Works office in preparation for the remnants of IRA. And last but not least, refuse accumulations, bulk day accumulations for solid waste things going to the landfill for this month were four point eight nine tons and accumulation for yard waste for the month were three point nine four tons. And we had zero dump body rentals for the month. Any questions, comments or concerns? All right. Well, thank you all for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bond. And moving on, we will go to Mr. Morgan, the Finance Office. Director of Finance.
Evening, everyone. I apologize. My video, I'm trying to get it to come on now, but to get moving on things. Not sure why this won't work. So for the month of August, we're two months into this fiscal year. The town currently has seen some small amounts of monies from the franchise fee. So we get those monies from Verizon and Comcast. We are continuously, or we've seen majority or a good amount of the monies come in for a business license fee. As you're aware, we modified our, that license to a two-year license for the cost of three hundred dollars. So far, we've had a little over a thirty individuals pay via credit and debit card. And we've also had some businesses pay via check. So currently, you'll see that we've brought in, in this fiscal year, thirteen thousand, five hundred thirty eight dollars and three cents. The reason that number is like an odd number is because businesses, some businesses also pay Prince George's County for their business license as well that they're obligated to pay in that area. What we will do is we're, we're going to have to accounting wise, will accrue with some, some businesses that paid in a month of June. Of course, that was captured in the previous fiscal year. But what we'll do moving forward is we'll capture all of those businesses that pay for this current program for the fiscal year of twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three. So that we have an accurate number of all the businesses that are, that have applied within the program. We're continuously to see improvements with our parking meter payments and violations as well as there's more traffic in the downtown area. We do have some highway user revenue that has come in as well. We're currently, we're at five thousand, six hundred twenty one dollars. And right now taxes are slowly coming in, which is anticipated. Of course, we've increased our rates on our taxes for residential and commercial and for our business personal property taxes and public utility taxes as well. Every year, we do not anticipate to get the bit of some of the big lump sum of deposits for real estate taxes until late September, October and November. So currently, right now, after looking in a bank account today, we have not received a big deposit. But we do anticipate that for the month of September. So you'll potentially see that within the next treasury report next month. And for business personal property taxes, we get those reports in from S, from SDAT, the State Department of Assessments and Taxations. So those are being billed out or invoiced out as they come in, which they start to trickle in in September and October. And typically, the big ones and for your public utilities such as Verizon and Pepco, they usually come in in October and or November. And those are anticipated to bring in quite about a bit amount of money, roughly about four to five hundred thousand dollars as well. On the expense side, we're taking care of our normal operations with the town of Marlboro, making sure that we're paying our benefits as well. You'll see potentially in the professional services, some things that I want to highlight. We pay twenty thousand dollars for our financial audit each year. So that's a, an expense that has already been pushed out and audit is ongoing within that process. Of course, we have our attorney, town attorney fees and whatnot for his services to the town. You'll see that media relations is pretty high compared to where we are, what we budgeted. We budgeted eighteen thousand dollars for media relations. We're dealing with the vendor in that area, but some of those invoices are from the prior fiscal year. So they're carried over because this is when they're going to be accounted for in or expensed out. So right now we have nine thousand dollars in that expense area. So we will do a readjustment within that line. I don't, once we do our mid-year in or end of the year adjustments as well as the planning firm. So as you know, we're, we're looking at annexation. So we have our planning firm and the survey firm that are doing some of the, the groundwork as far as the mapping and the services that they provide. So that's where you may see in a planning firm, it says about fifteen thousand dollars. So that's what those services are for or professional services are for in that area. As far as other transactions that that's going on, we're, we're playing our monthly bills as far as our mobile phones and cell phones and electricity as well. Public safety, they're starting to incur some expenses for their police state aid. Annually, they have a state aid that they get from the, from the state is for what is it, for supplies and uniforms and equipment for a police department. This fiscal year, they've been granted six thousand, four hundred. So they're starting to become more expenses in that area. And public works there normally just doing their normal duties within, within the town of Marlboro. One of the things that's under public works is the refuse collection, like Mrs. Bond mentioned, for bulk collection, but also for residential trash pickup and residential recycle. One thing that we will monitor in the next few months is we believe that our trash vendor may be increasing their rates. Not because of they want to, but I think that this is something that's been going on across the country as far as more trash being accumulated over the last twelve to eighteen months. So I believe that their rates may increase. So that's a, another line that may be adjusted mid, end or the year. We hoping that it doesn't surpass the allotted amount too much so that, so that we don't have to adjust a lot. Going down, looking at the sorry, looking at, one of the things that you'll see is potentially is that there's a big red number of a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. As I mentioned before, this is, I do not want to alarm people. Every year, like most governments and definitely within a town of Upper Marlboro, we look at the most of August and September and we're, we're very much in the red or close to net neutral. And it's simply because the, the numbers that we projected to bring in, such as taxes, such as parking meter revenues really have not been able to hit just yet. As I mentioned, we'll see a big lump sum of those taxes come in in September, October and definitely November and which you'll start to wipe, so be able to wipe some of the sweat that may be on your foreheads when you look at the red number. So I do not want to alarm everyone. Yes, this is something that we are currently monitoring because the projected numbers have not come in as of yet. But we know that we will start to see the homeowners within the town of Marlboro begin to pay their taxes. So this is more so of a, a timing issue that we have right now as we're reporting out on this. As far as other funds, I mentioned a police state aid. So right now, the, the revenue as that has come in for police state aid is quarterly. So for FY twenty twenty one, the previous fiscal year, nine hundred thirty five dollars and seventy five cents came in in the month of July. So that's why it's seen here because it was accounted for in July. Though you'll see the expenses made as a little bit over one thousand dollars. That's because we know that sixteen thousand, four hundred will come in for the current fiscal year and because the police department also had some, some leftover spending from the prior fiscal years, a state aid grant that they were able to use as well. So we're not overspending at all within that area. I just wanted to be clear so you can see why that those expenses exceed the revenues that has come in thus far. Community open space, this is a grant that Kyle has been speaking about over the last few months with the playground. We had, we did put out roughly about forty five hundred dollars. Some of this grant is reimbursable. Actually, a good portion of the grant is reimbursable as well. So you'll see those drawdowns once we request the monies back from the agency that has a lot of that grant. As I mentioned, American Rescue Plan monies has come in at a three hundred thirty one thousand, five hundred thirty nine dollars and eighty two cents. Currently, we've, we're going to start the conversations about what we're going to, how we're going to program those monies for the community in or for the town hall. Well, a good push, a good amount of the monies are most certainly going to be going out to the community. Right now, we have one expense that you'll see one thousand, eight hundred seventy dollars and ninety cents for that. And this is just for the first tranche or the first deposit of the American Rescue money. So we look to see another three hundred thirty one thousand come in within the next twelve months. Capital improvement projects, some of the things has been discussed over the last few months as well. Thirty one thousand went out for down payment for the dump, the dump trailer for public works. Sorry, not the dump truck, but public works twenty thousand and then eleven thousand went out for the dump trailer for public works as well. Moving down to the committee breakdown, we've had some small expenses and events. There, there will be some more in the next report after we've seen some other statements that came in for some recent purchases that were in the month of, or later in the month of August after they were out of its pending stage. So you'll, that, those numbers will change next month once we update everything. But as you can see, there has been some slight spending in the events budget and also the historical committee's budget as well. And as far as my updates, the audit is moving forward. I got an update from the auditor last week. Whereas they're looking to provide the town of Marlboro with the draft by the end of this week. They already sent me over the MDNA for me, for myself to update some of the, the huge or the big financial highlights for FY twenty twenty one. Those things were sent back just yesterday to the auditor. So again, we look to see the, the final draft come to the town by the end, by the end of this week and look to have, of course, the audit completed by the end of this month, which is, of course, the goal that we've been speaking about. As I mentioned, business license updates, I, I mentioned that thirty and thirty businesses have paid via credit card and we've had a good amount paid via check. I will be able to provide a update with the final numbers because we're going to be sending out a second round of notices to those businesses who did not pay. So those are the conversations that myself and the mayor will, will have moving forward. And just the debt service updates, we have our annual payments for our police vehicles. That's a semi-annual payment roughly around thirty two thousand. Now we have our public works dump truck payment that we already put the down payment of twenty thousand for and will have an annual payment of roughly, I want to say about eighteen thousand as well. So those are things that you'll continuously to see, not just this year, but within the next two to three years to come within our budget. So we'll, we'll try to do our best to keep everyone abreast on how those things may change if we pay off anything ahead of time. Because we, we do know that there's more things or more work to come with the town of Marlboro. But we're going to be very smart and intelligent on how we use our American Rescue Plan monies because we believe that some of the, the expenses or projects that we tend to do in the near future can be used with our ARP money. With that, I'm sorry, I was long-winded, but I can answer any questions if they're.
Excuse me, do we have any questions for Will at this time? Hearing none, moving on, John Hudson, Clerk's Office.
I just want to encourage everyone to go ahead and sign up for constant contact updates. We are every week sending out information about news and events in the town. All you do is go to the town's website and a pop-up will appear and you fill it out and you'll be added to our list to receive our mail, our emails regarding news and events. Stay informed. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, now on to committee reports, starting with Greenwell Consulting.
Yep. Good evening, everybody.
There's Jacob.
So I'll be, I'll probably be pretty brief tonight. The General Assembly's been pretty quiet. I think this is the last time I'm going to have the lovely opportunity of announcing that. The, starting in probably October, we're going to start to see a lot more pre-legislative work beginning. Notably, the Prince George's County delegation will begin there. Begin to have some pre-legislative meetings going into session where they can come out with the delegation bill list that the full delegation body will be supporting come January. So we will be reporting on those meetings once they start and after we meet with the full town commissioners to get an idea of the, our legislative asks for the twenty two session. If it's needed that we need to put in a bill similarly that as we did last year with Delegate Harrison's speed camera legislation, then we will happily write that up, get a sponsor and have that submitted. So I'll keep you posted on that and the delegation meetings. They're also starting to come up or put together the budget for next year. So that comes from the governor's office, but the committees also put together a sort of rough draft of what they would like the next year's budget to look like. Of course, with the American Rescue Plan, next year's budget is going to be very different than ones we've seen in the past. We have somewhat of an idea based off of the CARES Act budget language that they were able to sort of shoehorn in last year as it, as it flowed through during session. But really, this is the first time where they're able to sort of start from scratch. So that will be very interesting. And that is sort of where Greenwill has been looking right now is through the budget and to see where we can maybe help the town. One area we found was the MDE, the Department of the Environment, where there's some money that is set aside every year for flood mitigation projects that go directly to town councils or county commissioners. So this is one place where we are, we see an opportunity for the town. That and you know, if the town would like to do, do it an independent study on you know, water use or flood mitigation, we can, we can also work on that. And like I mentioned earlier, go through the delegation. So until then, we are talking with Senator Watson's office to get a meeting, a pre-legislative meeting with the commissioners and the mayor and for Upper Marlboro to discuss, you know, what's twenty twenty two going to look like. We've got a new senator, we've got a, we're still waiting to see who the who Senator Watson's replacement in the House of Delegates will be. And once we know that, you know, we will let you know. And yeah, so we're, we're going to move from there. But I think next steps are getting, getting a meeting with Senator Watson as he settles into this new role. That will likely come in mid-October, right, right around and before the Prince George's County delegation starts their, their discussions. But yeah, until then, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Jacob? Hearing none. Thank you, Jacob.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Historical Committee.
This is Brian Calacott speaking for Patty. She's been working pretty hard today at her other jobs. So I'm going to be filling in. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. So our events, we did Cruzino Maine on the twenty ninth, met a new neighbor on Marlboro Pike and had some long discussions with area residents, gave out business cards with the QR code. Thank you, John. And which has, of course, the link to the walking tour, which is now online. Thank you, Kyle. The twelfth, which is Memories Amorphous on Main, which is a Sunday, followed the movie night event the next day. So we weren't able to speak that, but we were able to meet with five people. I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but this event is intended to be able to trade stories and gain some of the original oral history of the town from some of the older folks who lived here. I guess they don't like to be called older folks, but whatever the words are. So Louis Buck, we did some interviewing with Evelyn, interviewed him and learned a lot about like, there was a movie that was filmed in small part in town in nineteen sixty four called Black Like Me with actor James Whitmore. Some discussion of the old funeral home, the bowling alley, the swimming hole, the trains. I got a contact for the, the Hope's Creek Line, Original Depot, which has been converted into a business. I know that's just outside of the current town lines, but it still has some interest to the town and possible future annexing. So we'll be working on those leads over the course of the next month. In fact, we have a session on the eighteenth, which is Saturday morning at ten. It's going to be a short one-hour session. I have asked Louis Buck to see if he would be able to join the meeting, but if not, we'll hold it at a separate time. We will still hold our meeting though on Saturday morning, ten to eleven. The Forestry Board canceled the Upper Marlboro Tree Tour due to COVID nineteen restrictions, but they, they were very kind about it and they said, you know, they're still interested just right now that they can't do it. We're doing some planning for. We're doing some planning for the upcoming event to support trunk or treat, and of course, that's October, that's just around the corner. And I think that's about it. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Brian?
I just want to apologize for not making it to Memories and Morsels because I had to work, sad to miss that.
No, no problem at all, Sarah, we had a great time, sorry we missed your movie, we'll catch it all together at one time or another.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian, moving on, the Events Committee.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Wanda Glasper, volunteer member of the Events Committee. So we had a great movie night on Saturday, the September eleventh. Town staff got the screen and the projector up and running. And the turnout was pretty good, we had a hundred and fifteen people that we counted. Providence St. John's provided some snacks and water and they collected canned goods. And we had one food truck vendor who was there selling ice cream and cupcakes. And I also want to say we had a presence on Cruising Main Street Day. We always like talking with everybody, telling them what we do and about our upcoming events. And then, so on that note, our next movie night will be on October ninth and we'll be showing cocoa. And the ice cream vendor has agreed to come and serve some warm food items. It'll be a little bit chillier, we think. We've also discussed our next event that we're proposing, trunk or treat. And Sarah's always, already provided you all with proposal for trunk and treat. We hope to have it October thirtieth on a Saturday. And we are waiting for board approval to move forward before we put work into the event. That's it, thanks.
Any questions for Wanda? Thank you for that report, Wanda, and we do have it coming up as far as trunk or treat, it's coming up later on in the program here. Sustainable Communities Work Group.
Hello, everyone, not very much to say this month, other than we, the Sustainable Communities Work Group is planning to work with two interested parties who would like to apply for the F I P slash B I P grant. So we are also working, as you know, standing a business association. And we hope to have more information about what's happening with that on our next meeting here at Town Hall. So that's all I have to say, just look forward to us launching, formally launching the F I P slash B I P program. F I P stands for Facade Improvement Program that we have expanded to a building improvement program. So if you combine the outside of your, the building plus the inside of the building, you get a building improvement program. So that's what you'll be hearing from, I would say, October first on. The name of the formerly known F I P program will be B I P. That's it for right now.
Any questions?
Look forward for more information.
Any questions for Evelyn?
That's great. I just said that's great news, no questions.
Thank you, Sarah.
Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the Arts Council. Do we have representation, Kyle?
No, I don't think so, but I can cover that for them.
Go ahead.
So we got five proposals back for the murals on Main Street project. Two historical murals for the building on Main Street, China Taste. And then three for the one on Water Street, so that's very exciting. So they are working on creating a Survey Monkey or some sort of online voting tool, so residents can vote for their favorite. And then once we have that all set up, we'll put some physical signage at those sites as well. Just showing people that, hey, there's going to be a mural here, here's some different designs. Follow this Q R code to vote, to catch both the online and people walking by, so that'll be exciting. And then, once we select that, then we apply for the implementation grant with the Maryland State Arts Council. So we can have murals by, I'm guessing, spring twenty twenty-two. And they're also working on the Happy Leaf Festival on October tenth, Sunday the tenth. Ten AM to four PM, they're getting some vendors, they're doing a sip and paint event. And they're going to have some, a lot, like some poetry and whatnot and some live performers. So that should be a good time, stay tuned for more details on that. And then they do their monthly featuring, or their monthly artists of the month featuring Upper Marlboro area artists. They've got actors and musicians and poetry people and poets, poets, so they've been busy over there.
Okay, thank you, just to note, I've seen the mural entries and I think everyone will be impressed. I mean, I'm, I was just tickled, they're really nice. Okay, the Green Team is next.
So I will report out for the Green Team. So Green Team met on Thursday last week, or the first week, yeah, this second week in September. The main project the Green Team is taking on this year is getting the community garden started at I've been St. John's Baptist Church, it's going to be community access garden. Stacy from the church has been working super hard to get us donations, pallets. And so we are going to be meeting again on Friday and we're going to start building fences, getting soil down. And we have some seedlings that the Soil Conservation, I think, a building that has them over there, so we'll be putting those in. The Green Team also did discuss looking at bylaws, so we, we thank the Historical Committee for their bylaws and we're going to alter those. And so that's something that the committee is going to be looking at next month. And they're also going to be working, there was some discussion on their budget because of the spending for the community garden. And that, they've decided they want that to be the main focus for the year, but they will have a formal budget next month with the bylaws. I think that's it, did I miss anything, Stacy?
I'm sorry, that unmute button, it was a little sticky, no, they am, I think that's pretty much it, we're up and running and ready to go. Can you hear me?
Okay, thank you for that, and last but not least, the Cert Team.
Yes, the Cert Team met in August and they also participated in the Cruisin' on Main Car Show. Month of August, they had forty-eight event hours total and then a total of three hundred and fifty hours of outreach and education hours, and that's it for Cert.
Thank you chief for that. Sarah, do you have a report? As a, the Commissioners' report?
I guess just to say that I continue to work on the vision plan. I know I need to get back to you so we can plan some community events. I get my master gardener field trip schedule. So hopefully we can get those planned soon. That's all I have.
I will, well, I think we'll still be good even for the month of October to do some of those.
Yeah.
In summer.
Yes, yeah, yeah, the Master Gardener program I thought would be good to have that with the community garden. And they're like, oh, well, there's just a few field trips and I'm like, you need to tell me when, so I can do some other stuff.
Okay. We will go on to the business section, which we have a, we are just chock full of good things today. Number one is a code appeal. Kyle, do you want to walk us through this or do you want Vicky to?
Um, I think we should hear from Code Officer Stuart, and then I don't know, is Janet Wyble on the call? I sent her the login information.
I don't see her on the call.
Okay, um, she said she was going to be on, um, but she has her letter in that stance. So I, I guess, yeah, we'll turn it over to Code Officer Stuart, she can give an overview of how the violation happened or how it got brought to the town's attention and then the steps from there, so I'll, I'll turn it over to her.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
So I would like to just start off, we have received a complaint on June first in regards to Ms. Wyble's backyard, she had some overgrown grass and weeds and vegetation growing back there. So I followed up, I addressed the complaint, I followed up. I had left a green card. Give out as kind of a courtesy notice to allow the person maybe about five days to try to correct or bring things into compliance. Had not heard anything, or I went back around to do a reinspection and I seen that they had not taken care of it. I did send a notice out, a violation letter. And to let Ms. Wyble know exactly what was being done. And she did not respond or anything, she did call into the office, I believe. Administrator Snyder, I believe she spoke with you and said she had not received the first notification that I sent out. And in between that timeframe, she had about fifteen days, this is her first offense, she had about fifteen days to comply. And she had not complied, so I sent another notification out to her. At that point, I believe we had some bad weather, but she didn't turn, have a landscaping company or lawn care company come out, and they did take care of your work. And I did go back around to re-inspect at that point and well, it just actually kind of started around, like I said, as of June first. And I went back around, around the sixth, around about the sixteenth of June. And and I saw that she, you know, she had not taken care of it by that time. I believe that's because she didn't get the first notification. Well, she did take care of it around, I went back to re-inspect it on June twenty-eighth. And there were photos attached with everything and she did have it taken care of by that time. So some time passed, I did get another complaint from a neighbor person and I had to go back out to address that. So that's the reason of why we are here today. I believe in she has in her interest that she's been singled out. And it's nothing personal, but if you do get a complaint, you have to address it. And as a code enforcement officer, this might be the follow-up and the complaint is, which is what I did.
What was the date of the second complaint?
The date of the second complaint, I believe. Let me check. I believe it may have been around like August twenty-fourth. And I received another complaint.
So both complaints were for the vegetation, it was a second complaint, the auto part thing? Or did I misread that?
I'm sorry?
Was there, were both complaints for vegetation or was the second something about auto repeal parts?
Well, that was something that I observed.
Okay.
That was, that was something that I had observed.
Because you were there for the complaint, I see, okay.
Right, in the midst of the vegetation and the tall weeds and grass. But I did send her a notification that on the thirtieth of August in regards to that the violations have been written in previous notices. And that corrective action, no correction act has been, has been done as of August thirtieth. Based on photos, second notice, second notices have been given to notify of said violations. So as of the thirtieth, she had not responded or anything in regards to the notification I sent out previous to that.
So basically, every time her neighbor is upset about her lawn, they call us, that?
Right.
Okay.
Do we have those pictures available?
Yes, the pictures are available, they were put into the packet that I submitted.
You need them on the screen, Mary, or?
Yeah, that would be helpful, I think. I know that I have them on my computer, but if I move the screen and I lose everybody, we got to start all over again. So if we could put them on this screen, that would be really good.
Sarah will put her head straight too, then.
I don't know if John's able to share screen, go into pull that up and scroll through that, John? May take a sec. And Vicky, everything, were any violations corrected or she's appealed? The one she's appealing still has not been correct. Correct.
Well, the original violation from June first, that was all, it was her yard was, was full. It had, nothing had been done, but she did take care of that and those were the photos that were from the, I believe they were dated before and after pictures, if you can see, I did label them. As of the sixteen photo of June sixteen, those were the before photos. And I did have a still photo that was taken on June twenty-eighth with the after. We'll show you what her yard looked like after she had taken care of it.
Right, where it looks, it's clear, dark, but like some brownness, right? So are the vines grown back now, is that the complaint?
Yes, the vases have grown back on the fence. Pictures of the house, nothing was, was, there was no violations on the front of the home.
Right.
The pictures of the front was just displaying the address because she had in her window. Playing the address of the property.
Yeah.
No, there was no violations for the front of the house.
Right. The peony bushes are fine.
So the main complaint right now, Vicky, is the vines growing over the fence line into the neighbor's yard?
Yes, yes, that's basically what is, is the complaint is just to have her maintain yard once it has been cut, just to maintain it and take the weeds and the vines off the fence.
Was Pat saying other people have vines on their fences, why is mine a problem? And the answer, I guess, is because it is, has, it's a problem for your neighbor. Is that?
I believe so, yes.
I can see Ms. Wyble's point in the fact that I can drive around town and see the same thing. And I could understand how she thought she was being signaled. And, uh, I could understand how she thought she was being singled out.
I mean, I can see how she would feel that way, too.
Yeah, which leads us to, if she cited a nu- a number of properties uh, letter. If, uh, we have not cited those, she has a point.
Well, if I could answer that, if you wouldn't mind, uh, uh, Ms. Knight and, uh, Commissioner Franklin.
That's fine.
Uh, there was an email that she did send us out and about singling out, and there were a few other, um, properties that she, uh, things that she listed, places in the town that she listed that did have vines, one of them being the post office wall.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, which I believe that is not a private residence, it is part of the postal, which is the post office parking lot. Which I believe that wall and fence belongs to them, which is a relevant property in my report.
Would still be commercial property, I think. And we would be, uh, you know, it, it still needs to be cleaned up, just because it's post office doesn't mean they can do that.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, I was just wondering, has a different set of property standard?
So I'd like to say something, um, if I'm not correct, Code Officer Stuart, you did go out and look at those addresses that she listed, and the ones that were in violation, you did send them letters, correct?
Uh, yeah, that is correct.
So how we handle this is, if somebody has a complaint about something, is when we address it. So since she complained about two or three other properties, we addressed those properties based on her complaint. So we weren't singling out anybody, and most of the complaints that we receive are from individuals. So, uh, Ms. Wyble has an issue, she corrected it, but she just didn't maintain it, so we're not singling out anybody, and yes, there's other properties, but if we were to violate every single property, we'd be doing a lot of houses in the town, so we're doing the ones that we get the complaints on, so that everybody's clear. So if you have a complaint about something, we can address it, but, um, there's multiple violations for a lot of properties, and the ones that are obvious, we take care of them, the others, we may not see them, we just have to deal with them when they come about. Now, this property in question, it's hard to see from the road. But the neighbor complained, because as you can see in the photo, the, the, uh, stuff is growing into her yard, which is causing her concern, because she has to maintain her grass before she gets a complaint from one of her neighbors, so just so everybody's clear, it's based on a complaint.
So, it sounds like, in, it's frustrating, I think, for Ms. Wyble, I've seen, correct, I apologize if I'm not, um, it keeps getting complaints, but she will need to maintain property so that her neighbor isn't being impacted by her property, um. So her neighbor isn't being impacted by her vegetation coming over into the other yard. Braden, please, I'm talking, um, and that, when she complained about these other properties, they were addressed, um, because it's a complaint-based system, so if, unless my grass is, you know, two feet high, and you drive by and just, that, that's a problem, you know, if my backyard maybe has some vines on the fence, if my neighbor doesn't care, that's fine, is that kind of, because we, you can't go on people's property and go look in their backyard, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Alright. Linda, you had mentioned in an email, like, kind of setting, like, being more clear about what vegetation standards were, was that something I listened to, um?
Yeah, I, I think we need to know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, what is, we've had other issues with, with, uh, code compliance, and that being, this isn't a weed.
Right.
Or, this is, you know, not vegetation, it's tall grass. So we need to be as clear as possible, uh, with what is said.
And then, at later. Yeah. Okay. What are we supposed to, what are we, we're supposed to do with it, like, what are we being asked to do?
Uh, so pretty much the homeowner, Ms. Wyble's asking for the board, I guess, to waive, uh, the violation. Um, so you can either uphold it, you can waive it, in previous time that, uh, the board's giving property owners a little extra time to comply. Um, I think with the property on Rectory Lane, you gave the gentleman an extra thirty days or something, so, um, this kind of, uh, arbitration type situation, uh, the best way to move forward that the board, the board can say, we're gonna uphold the violation and then keep it going, if you wish, um, and they can always contest it in district court, but.
So she wants to keep letting the vegetation go into her neighbor's yard, or she wants to just have more time to abate it than maintain it, I guess that's the conclusion.
I think if we, uh, assure her that, be, given the fact that our system is complaint-driven, and she has, uh, actually given us four complaints,
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have addressed those in a similar fashion as we addressed hers.
Right.
Which means that her complaint saying she was singled out is null and void. Uh, based on our, the way we do it, uh, I would I wouldn't let her off the hook.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think.
Cleared it off the first time, she knew, yeah, and I understand that, uh, and she now registered a complaint, and we have taken steps against her, you know, the properties she's complaining against, so we're doing everything the way it's consistent.
Right.
This, say, okay, we'll let, we'll leave you go for another six, you know, thirty days or whatever, that, that's not gonna solve anything.
Right, okay.
Because we'll be doing it for the other four people. Yeah, they'll get wind of it, and we'll be doing it for the other four people.
And that's true, because the exception that we made on Rectory Lane was because the property owner had COVID.
Right.
That's why we gave them the extra thirty days, um.
Yeah, so I, I think we should let this go forward. Uh, and, uh, we should, you know, let her know that it is complaint-driven, you have made complaints against these properties, and we have taken appropriate action to the property owners.
Mm-hmm.
That should allow her.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely don't think.
Single out.
Yeah, I don't think her neighbor should have to deal with the vines, um. So I agree that.
As humid as it's been, I'm sure anything with a vine is growing like crazy.
Yeah, so.
Okay, uh, Vicki, do you understand what we're saying?
Can you repeat it, I'm sorry, Mayor.
So I think.
Do you understand what we're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are there any questions, or anybody have any comments on this?
So, just so I'm clear, are, are you all saying that she should pay the fine?
Yes.
Okay, so, this is the first time we've done this, so how does that work now, that you all agree that she pays it, do does the town notify her of that?
We will, we will have to send her a letter, since she is not at this meeting.
No, no, man, does it come from Kyle, John, or Vicki? Who does it come from, saying that the board has, that's my question?
I'll, I can send the letter, Chief, just because the complaint came to me, and, uh, because I'm just speaking on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, um. And then it'll kind of get passed off to Vicki, if that makes sense, so, um, we'll just let her know she can contest it. Okay.
I'm just wondering if in that letter needs to clarify that the board decided not to grant the appeal because the system is complaint-based, um, and appeals are granted for extenuating circumstances, like, just so she, because she is feeling singled out, and we should, you know, even though she hasn't been singled out, that's how she feels, so if there's a way to, if it's possible to make the form letter, explain why, so that she understands it's not actually that she's being singled out.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I'll explain that, uh, she provided those, we investigated those other properties, um, and there was just no real extenuating circumstances, but she could not maintain her yard.
And given the fact that she had already done it once.
Yeah.
But people's feelings are important, so we should make sure that she knows we understand, and, um, make sure she feels that she's not being singled out, because she isn't, so.
Okay, everybody clear now? Chief, are you clear?
Yes, I am good.
Okay, everybody's good. Thank you, Kyle, for, uh, offering to write that letter.
Okay, everybody.
Thank you, Vicki.
Okay, moving on to item two, which is the board approval and swearing in of the Board of Supervisors of Election. Uh, Ellen Stevens, Yvonne Tucker, and this is a board vote. Uh, Joe is going to be done at a different time, just, uh, so you know, it's just a slight change. This is a board vote, so we are in quorum. So I move that we approve and vote, uh, Ellen Stevens and Yvonne Tucker to the Board of Supervisors of Elections.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got that, John?
I do, thank you.
With that being said, I, uh, go over to John's office, we're going to swear both of them in there. That's where we have the flags, so it will look. There with us just one sec.
Is everybody ready? First, uh, will be Yvonne. Okay? And you know how to do this, you can do it anytime, okay? Repeat after me, aye?
Aye. Yvonne Tucker.
You solemnly swear.
When I support the Constitution of the United States, now I will be faithful and bear true alliance to the State of Maryland, support the Constitution and laws thereof, and I will support the Charter, the law of the Prince Rivers County, that I do best of my skill and judgment diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of supervisor elections for the Town of McMoran, and for the County, according to the Constitution and the law of the state and town charter of the town.
And, okay, Ellen?
Aye. Ellen Stevens, besides will, or firm as case may be, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland, and support the Constitution and laws, laws thereof, and that I will support the Charter and laws of Prince Rivers County, and that I will do best in my skill and judgment diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of supervisor of elections for the Town of McMoran, and Prince Rivers County, according to the Constitution and laws of this state and charter of the town.
Thank you, ladies. Ellen, this is yours. Thank you, and thank you for volunteering for this service. Congratulations.
Okay, we're back.
I don't know if they can hear me, but thank you, ladies, for your service to the town.
Yeah, they're back, we're in the, uh, conference.
There are for those kind words.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, moving on, uh, to emergency ordinance, twenty twenty one oh five, John, if you would, please? If I still have John?
Sorry, I was taking care of business. Uh, let's see, so.
Ordinance twenty twenty one dash twenty five.
That is correct. That's twenty five, an ordinance to regulate and provide for the conduct of voter registration, maintenance of records, conduct of elections, certification of election results, and penalties related there, thereto. Whereas, section eighty-two dash thirty-four regulation and control of the town charter allows for the Board of Commissioners to have the power to provide by ordinance in every aspect, now covered by the provisions of this charter for the conduct of registration, candidacy and elections, and for the print prevention of fraud in connection therewith, and for recount of ballots in case of doubt or fraud.
Okay, do I have any questions or comments regarding, uh, ordinance twenty twenty one, twenty, dash twenty five?
So, um, my concern here is that the Board of Supervisor, Supervisors of Elections should have time to review this and comment on it. Um, they're the experts on, you know, how these elections are run, and I'd really like to have their feedback before, you know, I think it looks fine, but I, I think we want them to kind of tell us what's going on, so I guess I'm wondering what the timeline for passing this is.
I can cover that, Mayor, if you'd like, um, so it has not even been through full legal, legal review yet, um, so I'm not uh, recommending the board pass it at this time, it would still be an emergency ordinance, um, the board would be introducing it, um, today, if, if you wish. Um, so it would go through the process, I know John is sitting down, he sent it, he, he sent it out to the Board of Election Supervisors the other week, um, for their feedback, and he has a meeting scheduled with them, so he can start getting some input from them. Now, I don't know, John, if, um, you're able to make a, send the Commissioners an input sheet or something that you get, um, when you do sit down with the Board of Elections and Supervisors?
I will do that. Our night at six o'clock, and I will provide an update once we have that meeting.
Awesome, and I'm sure that it'll be on the work session, Janet, too, so, so, uh, John can follow up that with the discussion, or we could have members of the Board of Supervisor Elections at the work session to discuss it as well, um. And then it's just gonna remain an emergency ordinance, so that it goes into effect immediately, and does not sit for the twenty days after we pass it, either at the work session, or it can be passed at the, uh, the October town meeting, um, because that's before the election. Um, and then, of course, some parts of it will, some of the dates stay like September or back dates or whatever, those, um, that timeline will just take effect for the next round of the election.
Okay, so the emergency part is only be, like, taking into effect rather than reading.
Uh, well, it takes to affect immediately, and you can vote and introduce it without having to wait the twenty days. But we're not doing that. This meeting, we're not voting, and it goes into effect immediately. We are letting it sit for a bit, which is better than most emergency ordinances get. But once it is passed, it will take effect immediately.
I'm fine introducing it then. I just want to make sure they have that.
And did you want me to go through some quick, just for the, the public, some of the changes that this would?
That would be a good idea, because this is a very lengthy statement.
So this is the town's election ordinance, the first election ordinance since two thousand and one. And it's based off of the town of Burrow Heights's election. It's got some other election stuff brought in there as well, but it's pretty much based off their election, so we're not making all that's up. It pretty much changes some of the timelines for when we had the charter amendment got brought over. It, one of the big things it does is it actually sets the compensation rates for the Board of Supervisors of Elections Chair, Board Supervisor Elections Member, and any election judges they appoint. That is, to our knowledge, not been set. That's kind of like decided during an election between the president and the election judges. So this compensation rate seems pretty competitive compared to what other municipalities see, and that's set by election, not by year or anything. So if we have multiple special elections, they're getting paid for each election, not by year. It, but pretty much, it doesn't do too much craziness. It just pretty much highlights the processes the town had in place beforehand. It's actually being brought over into an ordinance. It, the absentee ballots, it kind of keeps it vague enough where there's some basic criteria that we have to follow with the absentee ballot, but it allows us to be flexible when we do issue them out, but it brings it down to the bare minimum. And then another section is electioneering and campaign material. We never really had any guidance on this before, prior to it being just you can't campaign within a hundred feet of the polling place. So now it does give some guidance on election signage and where election signage can be placed, which is something that a lot of other municipalities have. So pretty much you can't put election signage out more through the part of the election, can't create a safety hazard, has to be removed within two days of the election, can't attach utility poles, and it, and designated, you can displace stuff and designate town right-of-way locations determined by the town administrator. So it kind of takes, the Board of Supervisors Elections may not have the exact knowledge of where different the signages could go, so the town administrator in this case can work with the chief of police and public works to determine the proper locations of where it can go, like out for a town hall. We own property at the Commemorial and just stuff like that. And we can designate areas for campaign signage to go if someone doesn't really have a lot of, or their base isn't along the major highway routes and stuff. It kind of allows opportunity across the board for those candidates to, to get the word out. And then Election Day, it also states and puts in there that we can use voting machines. I don't know if we're, we're set for that yet, but when we do, it's in the ordinance and the guidance is set. And it also sets, one of the things that John brought over, lining up of the ballot is not by alphabetical order. It would be by the draw of the hat. So the Board of Supervisors Elections would draw names of the candidates out of the hat, and that would be the order that gets put on the ballot. So Albert, Albert and Steen doesn't have, he's not first up on the list every time. So that's another key one I wanted to highlight, and I think everything else is pretty much, pretty much the same. Um, oh, it also adds a section of ballot questions. I'm sorry. It authorizes the board. Beforehand, we had to like pass a special ordinance every time. We wanted to put ballot questions, but now it can be done by simple resolution. Sorry, Commissioner.
No, I just, I found my sticky that had the, my three questions, I guess. On the absentee votes, we had discussed having it so like, if the commission, the Board of Supervisors of Elections goes to their post office box and takes out ballots on Election Day, then those count. Is that? The wording was vague enough, and I just wanted to make sure that's still covered there, like, so they can collect absentee ballots from the post office on Election Day.
Yep. The only requirement is all the absentee ballots have to be at the polls by, before, yeah, before it's closed. That's, that's the big thing. So I mean, someone could make a special run to the, the post office box and get them, or someone could actually run an absentee ballot to the polling place and hand deliver it.
Right, okay.
Qualified agent or, or something like that.
Okay.
So, yeah, we kept it. We didn't say exactly that they could go to the P O box and get it, but.
Um, the second one was about campaign signs. Mainly kind of thinking of more with regards to annexations, but like, I know I put my campaign signs in the highway medians, and that's specifically not on here, but that's something that I've seen, like, county people do. So I'm just wondering if we're being more restrictive than the county, if, if it was problematic that mine were there, or like, if that's just something that most municipalities do.
I think it may be a state highway regulation. So a lot of those campaign signs may be illegal in state highway right-of-way.
Okay.
That's why, because we can only really delegate town right-of-way. So that's why in there it says it can, can be placed on town right-of-way.
Okay.
But, I mean.
I know there was, there was an objection to putting them by the monument because that's state property.
Oh, you mean the one in the middle or like the stonehacks? People always put them on the stone.
The stone considered a monument.
No.
It's a county property, but that's.
Which, you mean the crane one?
The three oh one memorial is, or the monument, rather, is a state memorial, and that property belongs to.
Well, we could put them on the Conmemorial property.
Right.
Because it's town-owned. You just can't put it in the state right-of-way, which is like the first two feet. So according to the Maryland State Highway website, they ask politicians to refrain from placing their campaign signs in right-of-way.
Okay.
Yeah, so there, we can only govern our own right-of-way. But, so we're not going to remove.
And I think it's good, yeah. Because I didn't know where I could put them. So having like a list of where you can put them, I think is helpful for candidates, so.
And maybe we could add that.
I just wanted to clarify, root something up here, actually. And the other thing was, if, like, the mayor and I run again, we just can't come to town hall on Election Day. Is that, is that how that works? Like?
Correct. You can come in, vote, leave. Yep, because I know the mayor stayed for the special elections, but she wasn't running. Yes, that's why that, that's why that, but normally, if, if you're running, you come in, you vote, you're fine, and then you can either hang out outside town hall or keep going door-to-door or whatnot. But that's generally the electioneering.
And that's usually fine with a mayor to not have, to be out of their office on Election Day. That's usually a problem. Outside of, it's not a deal, but is it going to be a problem long term?
It shouldn't be. Also, any other commissioners have any thoughts on that? Mayor, do you have any thoughts on?
Like, do you think it could be a potential problem for you not to be able to be in town hall on Election Day? Do you understand?
Well, technically, I could probably be in my office and close the door. I have another office between me and wherever the election is being held. So, and that if I need to be in the office, I can pretty much come and go from my back door. I can just close off both these doors.
Oh, you mean go through the, like, not go through where the polling is, like, go through the back.
Yeah, well, there's a, there's a door right behind me.
Okay, that makes sense.
And there's a door over there. I have a number of doors. I could disappear quickly.
I mean, I doubt there's going to be an emergency where we would need the mayor in town hall, but I just want to make sure that if that situation arose, we wouldn't be getting ourselves in some kind of spot in the future.
No, there are other ways to be in this office.
Okay.
Like I said, there's a, there's enough, I think, space in between where the desk is and where the first polling place is.
Well, it's, I mean, like, technically not, but if there's an emergency, then if that requires the mayor to be in town hall for whatever reason, I don't know what it could be, but we didn't expect to lose two commissioners either. So I just want to make sure we're prepared for any kind of odd situation. That's all.
And that's not a problem. If, if I needed to be at the town hall and not come in through that door, all somebody would have to do is come through my office and open this door behind me.
Okay, and we could, I guess, just.
My office. Without going through the voting place at all.
Okay. And we can have some, like, because it would be an emergency and we could have maybe like, I don't know, I guess we could have chief or a Board of Supervisor of Election person, like, involved if it was necessary. I feel okay about it. I overthink things. Sorry, guys.
But like you say, we didn't think we'd lose two commissioners in a row either, so I understand. Okay, any other questions on the town election procedures, ordinance? Hearing none. Moving on to Resolution twenty twenty one dash twenty two, which formally appoints the town administrator and the chief of police. This is for a board vote.
Resolution twenty twenty one dash twenty two, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the town of Upper Marlboro to formally appoint the incumbents to the offices of town administrator and chief of police in accordance with the town charter. Whereas on March eleventh nineteen eighty, the town board of commissioners reportedly passed Resolution one dash eighty to have a resolution to create a police force for the town of Upper Marlboro. And whereas the Office of Town Administrator and the Office of Chief of Police were initially formal, formally created or ratified by law pursuant to ordinance twenty twenty dash oh three, passed on May twelve twenty twenty, which took effect twenty days later. And whereas the town of Upper Marlboro organizational chart was authorized by Resolution twenty twenty dash fifteen on June twenty third twenty twenty. And whereas Charter Amendment Resolution C A R zero one dash twenty twenty one amended the town charter to include the aforementioned offices and became effective on April twenty eighth twenty twenty one. And whereas C A R zero one dash twenty twenty one included a requirement for appointment by ordinance or resolution in Sections eighty two dash fifty nine A and B of the town charter with the creation of set offices. And although the current incumbents holding these appointed offices have been performing their duties for some time under other pre-existing law, the board wishes to now formally appoint set officers in compliance with the recent Charter Amendment. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the town of Upper Marlboro, that the following appointments are hereby made and ratified. Town Administrator Kyle Snyder and Chief of Police David Burse. And be it further resolved that said appointees as charter officials shall be administered the oath of office required by Section eighty two dash eighty five of the town charter. And be it further resolved that the resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage, and that the president mayor is authorized to execute this resolution on behalf of the board passed by the Board of Commissioners of the town of Upper Marlboro, Maryland, at a regular public meeting on this fourteenth day of September twenty twenty one.
Are there any questions or concerns?
I just have one. It seems like, right, it seems like weird to have chief sworn in a second time. Like, it feels like we did something wrong and we're fixing it, but like, I, I don't know, I.
Well, technically, we are.
It seems strange.
Well, he's, he's actually already met the requirement because he has already been sworn in by Section eighty two dash eighty five of the charter when he was first appointed. So he qualifies. It's only me who need, who needs sworn in at this point. And we can, I guess we'll do that.
Okay, so we're not wearing him in twice.
Correct, yeah, because that would just cause confusions on, like, why were you sworn in twice? What'd you do wrong? Were you fired and brought? But he was already sworn in according to eighty two dash eighty five, so he's good to go.
That was what I meant by the word weird. I just. As long as that's good, I'm good. Okay.
Any other questions or concerns? Do I have something to swear in, Kyle, at this moment?
Uh, we're going to do that tomorrow, Mayor, after the pass.
Okay.
It can just, yeah.
I, I'm just checking. At this point, I will make the motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty one dash twenty two. Do I have a second?
Second, I second.
All in favor?
I'm kidding. Aye.
Okay.
Breathe easy now. No, I'm just kidding.
Not yet. You're not sworn.
And, yeah.
Okay, moving on. Resolution twenty twenty one twenty three, Main Street, Maryland affiliate. This is a board vote. Kyle, you want to run this one real quick?
Sure. So this is the exact same resolution the board passed, I'm thinking almost a year ago, if not a bit more. When we first applied to be a Main Street Maryland affiliate, the Main Street Maryland House or Office of the Department of Housing and Community Development has been swamped with all the COVID relief funding, so they're finally getting to our application. I've sat down with the chair a couple times, and we've corrected the initial map application we put in. And they asked us to just eliminate one line of the original resolution where it kind of said, it kind of hinted that would be a full Main Street Maryland designation in that second whereas paragraph, so I deleted that. So now it just says Main Street Maryland program offers. But they, they have already approved this language, and once the board, or if the board approves it, it'll go to Main Street Maryland tomorrow, or once it's signed, and we'll be, we should be an affiliate pretty quickly.
I know this is a longtime project of yours. So. John, if you'll just read the resolution so everybody can.
One minute. Okay. Resolution twenty one dash twenty three, a resolution of the town board of commissioners of the town of Upper Marlboro to authorize participation in the Main Street Maryland affiliate program. Whereas the Board of Commissioners for the town of Upper Marlboro have authority pursuant to six dash one oh two of the Housing and Community Development Article Annotated Code of Maryland, the Code of Maryland Regulations, C O M A R, C O M A R Regulations five thirteen zero two zero one of the town charter to participate in the Main Street Maryland program. And whereas the Main Street Maryland program offers technical assistance, training, and other services, and assists smaller towns and communities in working with the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development and using the National Trust for Historic Preservation National Main Street Center, which developed the Main Street four-point approach for commercial revitalization. And whereas since two thousand eight, Main Street Maryland programs have also incorporated a fifth-point clean, safe, and green to strengthen the economic potential of traditional business districts. And whereas the Board of Town Commissioners finding the joint, joining the part, the program as an affiliate is in the best interest of the town. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners for the town of Upper Marlboro, sitting in regular session this fourteenth day of September twenty twenty one, that the town board of commissioners hereby authorize the president and staff to proceed with the application and any other pertinent coordination and execute any necessary documentation to join Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development Main Street affiliate program.
Okay, I am moving to move forward and approve Resolution twenty twenty one dash twenty three. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda, the ever-present and hopefully soon-ending annexation. Now, I'll give it to Kyle.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I'm pleased to announce we have enough annex, we have enough consent from both Phase Two and Phase Three to move forward. The town attorney is working to finalize the annexation resolution and the annexation plan. Once he does this, we can kind of complete the timeline for submitting everything. So it's pretty much once the documents are done and we set the date for the public hearing, the notices go out, we have thirty days, and it sits for forty-five days. So it's like a seventy-five day turnaround. Once we get those documents from the attorney best. So hopefully that can move through pretty quickly. These, but with that, so we have all the voter registration consent to get, to go to move forward. One section I want to speak on is Valley Lane. I know that this has always been a, a topic of discussion for the town. It's kind of an awkward three houses down there. And so. And so staff is, uh, presenting to the board, um, to see if, uh, because. Town, the town would not be able to provide full town services to those three properties. Primarily because of the roadway, um, being extremely too narrow for trash trucks and snowplows and whatnot to get back down in there. Um, and then there's a large amount of flood control store management issue. And, um, their section of the roadway is county-owned, um, so we technically wouldn't be plowing it anyways. Um, so there's of the three properties, only two really, um, we'd be able to get a, uh, a waiver on town taxes or abatement of town taxes. Up to five years, or if the owners move, who sign the annexation consent form. Then it would reset and the new tenants would be paying full town taxes as well. Um. This is the only, uh, kind of. Um, weird section of the annexation which, uh, that's would apply. Um, the town did grant one, a waiver to the, uh, Moose Lodge because it was their nonprofit, but because they leased out part of their building, they had to pay for. County taxes, but, um, they wouldn't really need any town services because they're technically a commercial property, so that was signed. Um, and so the staff is proposing two additional ones for the Stevenson property. And then the other one on Valley Lane as well. Um, so if the board's open to it, we could begin, uh, processing those once attorney best gets those. Um, annexation documents, the resolution, the plan. Uh, we could start working on this and we would just have to get those approved by the board and sign and notarized by everyone prior to the. Annexation coming to a close, um. So.
So. There aren't any town services that they would really use at all unless they wanted to like borrow an animal trap.
Yeah, pretty much, and, uh, I think our police cruisers and four-wheel drive can make it back there. Um, but that's, that's about it there, um. That's pretty much it, so they probably have to take their trash to the dump. Or they would have to haul it up to Valley Lane for the contractor to pick it up at Church Street. Um, so that's, they'd have to haul their gar, they're paying taxes to haul garbage up a couple hundred yards, um. To get it collected, so until, um, and in the time, the town would work with the county, see if the county would turn the roadway over to the town so we can start maintaining it. Or request the county to maintain it. Um, and possibly expand it wide in it and, uh, put some better flood control devices in because every time Water Street Bridge floods, Valley Lane floods and they get trapped. Over there, so if anything, an emergency does arise, it kind of becomes a, a water rescue incident on top of whatever else is going down there as well. Um.
So. Well, it would take, even if we got it over from the county now, it could take us that long to get everything done.
Correct, yeah. A part of the grant of a bond bill, Valley Lane wasn't listed, so we couldn't, we'd have to raise funds separately for that anyways.
Right, okay. Yeah. I think that.
Okay, with this, it, like it says, it, a discussion, so if there's any, I, you have to keep, you know, look over for some more, if you feel that there are. Uh, any other questions, you can just, you know, call, call or myself and we can take care of that, uh. So anybody else has any questions regarding this? Okay, moving on, we will move on to the trunk or treat, uh, trunk. Or treat on August thirty, or October thirtieth. This is a discussion and board approval. Sarah, do you want to go? Wanted to go forward. Is Wanda still?
Wanda is still on the call. Wanda, did you want to do it or did you want me to present this?
Sarah, please. Yes.
Okay, I kind of, I, I worked with the events committee in chief as kind of the commissioner liaison to get it put together, so. Um. Because of COVID, um, CERT and, uh, our public safety department recommended that we do a drive-through trunk or treat. Um. And. The concern from. The committee. Was we got to have enough candy, sending people home, so we talked about issuing free tickets. And actually requiring a ticketed entrance with your free ticket. Um, so that we're, we're sure we have enough candy for everyone. Um, and chief, um. Drew, kind of drove me around the area up by the school board. To indicate how with the current staffing. And volunteer capacities we have for public safety insert, we can manage the traffic coming through. Um, without any problems or, um. Limitations because of our constraints, so the map that you see. Over on the left of the page, sorry, it's the right of the page, um, there. Traffic would come in on Old Crane Highway. Um, go up around school lane. Come into the Sasser Field area in the back and kind of like curve through that little parking lot. Where, that was where they would get their ticket checked. If they didn't have a ticket, they'd have to be sent back out. Along school lane and out on, to, to Crane Highway. If they have their ticket, they can come through along the Sasser Fields. Drive by some decorated trunks, possibly some other decorations. And pick up their bag of candy at that green dock. And then to alleviate traffic going out, they can go into two lanes to head out, come back out onto Old Crane Highway. Um, the sightlines are good along Old Crane Highway for getting in and getting out. And this allows a lot of cars to move through with the least amount of disruption. Um, I have contacted the Boys and Girls Club. Um, Charles Owens, to make sure that they don't have events going on. Uh, and he said if I heard no, he emailed everyone, it was like, if no one says anything, then you just go ahead. Though, and no one said anything. They have a lot of sports going on, so.
And this is the time of year for that.
Yeah, we had baseball, football and football the other day.
Okay, I do have a question. Uh, as you know, there's, uh, another. Uh, that may happen in Marlboro. At Darnell's Chance. And I ask why or did you even consider partnering with Darnell's Chance?
So the events committee planned this event. Um, and, and while we were putting this together to present it, um. The, John started partnering with Darnell's Chance and planning this separate other event. Um, the reason we mixed the idea of doing it at Darnell's Chance is because the parking lot. There's no good sightlines in and out of parking lot. And the parking lot is smaller and doesn't have a capacity. I did recommend that we move. The ones that were going on with historic committee and town clerk over to our event, so we could do it all together as one event. Um, but. It's. The events committee planned that, that has planned something else. And I, it, there, we don't, we don't have the capacity to move people. Through town and have the public safety. Adequately covering all that. So.
No, my, my question wasn't, uh, you know. Initially, when you decided to do something for Halloween. We knew we were gonna trunk the tree. Did you even consider partnering with park and planning on a, any kind of event?
Right, so we considered partnering with park and planning and we considered multiple different locations, but. We can't rely necessarily on park and planning providing us. The safety staff services that are required to hold the event. So, like, when we do it on Main Street, we partner with Darnell's Chance and they come down and, or they, I think they came down last time. We discussed having a kind of ghost walk-through area with them, but. Running cars through Main Street is not going to be a good plan, so we needed to move it. To where it's going to create the least disruption. So. We certainly, once this plan is approved, the idea is to reach out to the committees and the other air, businesses and everyone. And ask them to participate in it. Things just got. Going. After this was already.
Okay, because I, I was looking at both plans and I really do think that if. Everyone sat down at a table, we could work this out to make it work. Uh, in one area and make it a more community event. Uh, combining the two. That's my thought.
I, I mean, I agree, it should be a community event, and this is the, this, the community, the volunteers that we have. Has planned this, this is the second year. Um, that they've planned. And. But when we, when it was planned last year, it was, we don't have the capacity to do it. And so. I'm not sure how we have the capacity to run people from. One place to another and have adequate public safety staff. That's the concern, that's the concern that when I spoke with our public safety department, they said, we just do not have. Capacity, I spoke with our CERT team, they said, we don't have enough people to cover all those events. So I spoke with the event in process and I said, look, we keep, we don't have the capacity to cover all of this, but.
Okay, I, I know that, uh, Darnell's Chance does have the, uh. Ability to, uh, call out the park police, which would be an additional safety issue. They would be able to help out as well. So I really think that maybe we should all be sitting at a table. And going, what can we move and how can we make this work as opposed to having two events?
I mean, I, there shouldn't be two events. Um, I was just hoping we could make it work together, yes, that's what I was hoping to, but when.
Well, I think if we sit down at a table and look at it, we can get it to work, but see, right now, you've got two opposing, uh. Events and, and nobody's talking really to one another. And I think if we do, we might be able to come up with a solution.
Yeah, I, I really, sorry, it's a minute. I've, I've tried to have conversations and tried to bring things into the size that our staff has told us they can manage. I am, I am representative of the events committee, told me, this is what we can handle. Our staff has said, this is what we can. So. I understand that. John and, John and I have had discussions initially and I initially was like, we have to keep this in smaller, okay? But right now, yes, it does feel like two competing events because what was this kind of controlled event is now. Two big events that I don't know, I know the events committee has told me, we cannot staff that, we can only staff. This. Area and CERT has said, we can only staff this area. And police department has said, we can only, like, that's all we have. So I don't want it to be competing events, I want it to be the whole community coming together and the community. Our events team has planned this event, so I would like to see it come together. And I would like us to do it with the capacity we have so that we don't have. Accidents on the road and don't have, have police can't go through, we don't have traffic. Blocking up Main Street and have our Main Street businesses angry with us. We just. We need to. Pull it all together as a community, but in a space we have the capacity to handle.
I, I. I disagree, uh, with that, I, I think. Partnering with, uh, Darnell's Chance is a great. Opportunity for us. And you always want better communications or, uh. Relations with the county and that's, that's the county. Uh. They would be doing a lot of heavy lifting that maybe we wouldn't have to do, but we don't know that given you haven't spoken.
John's been speaking with them. I.
John. With these people, nobody's speaking together.
We, we were, we were, but I was being heard, Linda, I'm gonna be honest. I wasn't being heard in my concerns about the capacity. Um, and the events committee is frankly, after last year, having the event canceled after they put in all that work last year. They were really very hurt and frustrated. And they are a community who has been putting in tons of work to make Marlboro Day comeback. Make these events happen, bring out the community. And saying to them, you did all this work, you did this thing, thanks. We're not gonna do it. It, it doesn't feel like it's respecting our volunteers. Yes, we should come together as a community. If we can have the events. And we can have people move through them, so you can go to Darnell's Chance and then you come over to this area, but. Darnell's Chance has to be able to control their site. We can, Marlboro can only control this site. So. It has, because of the safety issues, the like site control has to be tighter. And that doesn't mean we can't work together as a community, but we can't spread it all over town and still stay in our capacity.
I don't see how having two events the way they're planned right now. Is any different than spreading it all over the community. All over the community. And then it will be that event and your event and our, it needs to be a community event. And it needs to come together as a community event.
Right, I ha, it's just how is this other event being staffed? Where do our. Our responsibilities end in someone else's responsibility again? Like, how does that? How does that flow? Because we have a lot of cars moving through, we have kids in those cars and we need to, like. That's why I ran this all through public safety and CERT first to make sure. This event could be done safely, so my concern is. That if we have a broad community event, we only have two police officers. Um, so I don't. It, it, the way it has to be happening is. Like, we can't have our police officers controlling all of town, that's a problem, I think, and. Without having. For sure that we're going to have the police staff there regularly. Consistently throughout the night, not pulled off to go anywhere else, we could have to cancel the event again.
Okay, the event is ex, that is approximately six weeks away, it's not a month, it's, uh, longer than a month away. I think we need to sit down and, uh, if I have to bring the two parties together myself, I will.
That's why I, I was, I'm willing to talk to John, I've tried to talk to.
No, no, I need you to talk to Darnell's Chance.
Okay, I mean, it's just.
I need, I need for you to sit down and look at this as a total package as opposed to two separate events. And I think it can be done. If it can't be done after we sit down, what's the harm in waiting another few days?
So there's no harm in waiting, I think the concern, the, the concern from the events committee. Is before these volunteers. Put their time in to make this event happen, they need to know it's not going to be canceled. So.
I mean, it, I don't, I'm not saying cancel anything.
It's just that.
Fine, not canceled.
Last year they put a lot of time into it, it got canceled, so I. The volunteers on the events committee need to know that there, that at least. This. Can move forward. Now, having it be a broader event, as long as, you know. A lot, like, if we can get CERT there and public safety there and it can work, then. You know, but, and that's. That's the concern, so. that's the concern. So we can talk about that, but if ever, it's not just me, it's not like I'm kind of, it's like I'm responding to what our volunteer community organizations are telling me their capacity is. I represent them on the board, so that's why I'm doing that. And I've tried to express that.
Okay, well, I just feel that we should at least try to make this as unified an event as possible. And by combining the two, we're not putting people at opposite ends of town. Which to me is more of a problem, but I think we, I think we can do it if we put our heads together and we work together. Let, know what your schedule is, and I will see to it that we can get something together that you and Wanda can and, and discuss it along with Chief, and if I need to bring in CERT.
Okay, yeah, it was, I mean, CERT and our public safety department are why this plan is the way it is. So I would want me without them.
Okay, I would either, so let's, let's meet with them. And I think we can do it. I think it's, it's doable, but we have to keep an open mind. I think there is, we don't have that. So that's, that's all I'm saying. So let's, let me put that together and we'll take it from there and hopefully we can go forward with it. I mean, doesn't need.
Okay, so.
More approval, but.
Okay, so I get, so we'll do this, and then after we have this meeting, we'll be able to tell events, yes or no, won't be changed.
I'm not saying it won't be changed. I'm saying it will be, I'm trying to combine the two, that doesn't mean that your, what you have up on the screen right now is going to be.
Oh, no, I mean, like, they won't put all this time and work, like, we come up with a plan, they put all this time and work into it, and then it gets canceled. That's what they don't want to happen.
I mean.
Trying to make sure it doesn't happen.
It's not, I, I wouldn't want to cancel trick or treat or trunk or treat. I mean, we. What?
We did that.
Well, we did last year because of COVID.
But this was a plan.
More of the concern last year than anything.
Right, it's just that this was their plan. So that's why they're concerned. This was their plan last year, it got canceled like this last year, so they want to make sure that it's going to go forward this year. That's what I need to make sure for the volunteers who put their time and work in. I need to make sure that their time and work is being respected and used properly. That is why I am asking us today to be able to give them a yes or no, not on this plan necessarily, but once we say go, we're not going to change our minds. That's what I'd be able to tell them.
Well, Sarah, you are the one person who worries most about everybody's health, so that I might even leave up to you. So let's look for, let's look at putting this together as, as a unified event and see. No, and I don't know. Three weeks from now, we could be eyeball deep in the Delta variant. I can't control.
Yes, it just is, this type of trunk or treat went on last year when we were eyeball, like, that's kind of.
I'm not saying we aren't going to be this year either. I don't know that, Sarah. You have a crystal ball? Uh, but you know, if it isn't, then we can go forward. If, if everyone is comfortable going forward. Last year, not everybody was comfortable going forward.
Well, so they'll pause, because I, they're not going to do anything until everything's solidified, but we'll, we'll have a meeting and we'll try and get somewhere.
That sounds good. Thank you. Okay, moving on to administrative updates, a legislated, legislation projects and initiatives. Do you have anything there?
Uh, yeah, I can run down the project tracker list there. So Capital Trail Coalition, we're working with Park and Planning, we had to push the date back to October due to a, a conflict with one of the part, the main trail person for Park and Planning. So we're hopefully to set the walkthrough up in October on the new playground construction. I wanted to bring this up for a kind of board consideration about a possible groundbreaking event on the day of trunk, excuse me, uh, the day of trunk retreat on the thirtieth, either at 10:00 AM or 11:00 AM, just for an hour, just to bring the county reps and the state reps out to get their support behind the project and just kind of break ground on the first public playground for the town. The thirtieth was picked just because the construction equipment will be staged on by the thirtieth, but they were not going to start until the first week in November, so that Monday, on that first Monday in November. So we could possibly push the groundbreaking back to the 23rd, they're just, it just looks to be a playing field without anything staged there, but, uh, but I just want to bring that option up to the board. I don't know if the trunk or treat, how much resource would be pulled, and I know Chief's got the officers, I don't know how how much of a pull that beyond the officer's chief, if it's like a 20-person ceremony. I don't think we need dedicated police officers and I'm not sure if we really need public works to help set up and break down and whatnot, but.
What was that Kyle?
Oh, sure. Would you have concerns with having a groundbreaking ceremony on the thirtieth, the same day of truck or treat with that? I don't know if we would need police officers there and certain traffic control. We're trying to keep it kind of a smaller ceremony, but.
If it's in the parking lot, no, because everybody should park in a parking lot or is in the that's a building lot and then leave back out. That shouldn't be a big deal.
Okay. So we'll track for that at the moment. And that should be just a quick one-hour shovels, photo op, couple words, and then some, uh, some chit chat and call today, and then we'll have a ribbon cutting once, in the spring, once the playground's fully done for phase one, and then we'll jump into phase two and, and phase three, which we've applied for funding for, for the splash pad. Town financial policies, I submitted my comments over to Mr. Morgan a few weeks ago, so we'll put that before the board in October, because all po, administrative policies do need board approval. Part of moving forward, automated speed enforcement, we're setting up some meetings with the board and the top ranking vendors. And moving forward that, we're not issuing payments for proposed by, for the planning event, that should be under the next one down, under the murals. The murals, as I mentioned, five of the six proposals received, we're working on designing a format for online voting, and we're going to be issuing out payments to those people for their work of submitting those proposals. Blended meeting, we're looking through possibly funding that with the ARP funding, set discussions to come. A common more beautification, we've kind, we've got, received two proposals. We put it on hold for budget constraints, and we're just coming up on full time anyways, so it may be good to do that in the spring. Church Street Parking Lot and the Pocket Park Purchase, we're just waiting for an appraisal from the Pocket Park so that the board can make a final offer and move forward with approving an ordinance for purchase for that lot. Phase two and three annexation, we discussed, the Water Street Garage, Green Wells Working, Revenue Authority to get some figures before staff can put together a proposal for the board to look at before sending it over to Revenue Authority. We're just waiting on there, the county's revenue sheets up for their parking rates and also for their tickets, so that we don't, we can make an educated proposal to them. Marlboro Town HOA, I'm working with them. My goal is to have a draft agreement over to the HOA Board next week for the board to discuss at the work session on the 28th. And then that can either get approved in October or could kind of move down a little bit as we work through the road RFP as well. And then the electric vehicle charging station, we've kind of put that on hold due to cost and vendor interest. I know Chief was working with a vendor. Do you have any updates on that, Chief? We've got like $15,000 quotes. I think Chief may have gotten another quote. I don't know if that panned out, Chief.
Yeah, I guess we were waiting to follow back up. Pending the funding update. That's sure where we are with that.
Okay. And I'm also, I'm, I reached out to MEA to see if we could apply for the next round of grants for the installation of the chartering stations as well. So that's pending as well, so. And I can answer any questions or concerns on these or any other projects? Oh, the attorney RFP, we've gotten one submission already. We're going to discuss that, the September work session, they're not due till Friday. And then the road RFP, I'm hoping to have a draft for the board to discuss on the September work session as well.
Thank you, Kyle. Anybody have any questions for Kyle?
No questions.
Okay, I do, any other questions, public comment at this point?
I have an administrative thing there about the trash contract. So as we discussed, the trash rates are going up, and Birch just sent over an updated contract for refuse collection for the town. It's going up from $11, pretty much $12.82, which is about just over $5,000 additional annually. So because of that, we, I asked them to generate a new contract for the board to approve. And I just got it this afternoon. I was hoping to get it before the town meeting for the board to at least look over and approve. That may be something we have to look at at a work session or approve at a work session. So it goes into effect October 1st. And I had asked for the contract a couple months back when they first issued it. Or let us know that the rate was going to go up, and this is the county increased their rate, so our vendor has to increase their rate. This is the first time they've increased their, the vendor's rate since they were initially awarded the contract, I think back in 2014. So it's an additional roughly 5,000 per year. I just want to put that out in the town meeting in case that has to be brought up at a work session.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Anything else? Any other public comments? Hearing none, I move that we adjourn this meeting. It is now 9:04. Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us. We have a special work session, just as a reminder, will be held on 21st, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Again, that will be, excuse me, a Zoom meeting as it will until we open the town hall. Thank you again, and good night, and everyone have pleasant dreams and sleep well.